We are live.
My good behavior now.
Good evening, welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustments. We are meeting with you virtually as we have been now for the past eight, nine months. We are meeting with you in accordance with the open public meetings act. This is the Center Byron M. Bear Open Public Meeting Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. So that's, that's what we're doing here today. This is our regularly scheduled meeting. December 3rd, 2020, a little after 6:30 PM. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
States of America.
United States of America.
Through the republic.
The republic, which it stands. My nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice. Hey. Any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the open public meetings act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City reporter and posted with the clerk on November 25th, 2020. And revised notice was sent out Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. And we have both of those notices to be marked.
Okay, they will both be marked as a package as B1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget, can you please swear and please take roll call first?
So I'll take roll call. So that's okay. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Bakhto?
Right here.
Commissioner Natchert? I just saw him and I guess he.
He was here. Here he is.
I'll come back to him one second. Commissioner McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Here.
Commissioner Natchert?
Here, but I think you have eight now, right?
No, we only have seven with you.
We only have seven yet. Vice Chair Donnelly hasn't signed on. So if.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
We have seven present.
Thank you. Bridget, can you please swear and stamp?
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you are about to give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and that's Ms. Sigmund, Mr. Black and Ms. Baptiste.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
So the agenda is a bit different. We had a number of items that are carried. So just to make it easier, I'll share my screen and walk through that. There we go. All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So as listed under adjournments, case C20-027, 19 to 21 Armstrong Avenue is carried to a date uncertain. Next, KZ20-067, address 332 Hoboken is carried to the December 16th special meeting with preservation of notice. That special meeting will be held on a Wednesday night, Wednesday, December 16th. Also, these are not listed under adjournments, but they are not being heard tonight. Case Z20-047, address 286 to 294 Arlington Avenue is carried to a date uncertain. Everything with the exception of 332 Hoboken that we're carrying tonight will is carried to the new year. And since we haven't adopted that calendar, no notices will be preserved. Anything else will need to renotice for the new year. We are going forward with 665 Summit and 149 Broadway and 83 Chestnut. But KZ20-035, 2737 JFK Boulevard is carried to a date uncertain. We are hearing 9/11. But lastly, case Z20-003, address 80 Roman Avenue is being carried to a date uncertain. And if you need me to repeat any of that, I know there was a lot. Just let me know.
I don't see, and maybe I'm looking at outdated agenda. The, I don't see what you have as listed as under B, under adjournments.
Yeah, so that may have been the old agenda attached to a calendar invite. I did send out the revised agenda on Tuesday. And that is the one that's on the data portal that was resunshined on December 1st. So that was, that was the only thing that was added, plus a minor revision to a description of an item.
And we're not even, we're not hearing it. It's, it put on the show there's an adjournment.
Correct. They, they had noticed for tonight. But since we thought we had a lot of things on, we, we pushed it to, to the next meeting.
Okay, so let's see what, just so I can understand what is going forward today. What's going forward is 665 Summit, 149 Broadway.
Yep.
83 Chestnut.
Yes.
And 9/11, correct?
Correct. And we'll start with the review of the calendar for 2021 first.
Okay, so for anybody who, who has called in for any other application, you're certainly always more than welcome to stay with us throughout this presentation. However, if you would like to leave, feel free to leave because we're not going to hear any other applications this evening. And, and tune into the website for the planning office to learn more about when those other things will be noticed. Is that correct, Lindsay?
Yes.
Okay. So any other old business?
No.
And, and you believe, you think we should approve the agenda for 2021 before we go through these cases?
I guess that's up to you. If you wanted to change the order at all, I just figured.
The calendar. It's quick. So let's do it now. Let's real quick, right?
Yeah, happy to do that.
I make a motion without any objections that we agree with the calendar dates and ways presented at the moment.
I second.
Should I do a roll call?
Sure.
All right. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakhto?
Yes.
Commissioner Natchert?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes, I see one of the dates is my birthday, so that's cool.
Mine also.
Happy early birthday, guys.
Very early.
When, when is the day before?
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the 2021 calendar. Carrie is all in favor. And just really quick, it says that all of the meetings will be held on the first floor boardroom of the Holloway Building, which is the new building near the City Hall Annex. We are remaining virtual for the time being. It's just if things change at some point during 2021, we'll be having our meetings at this new building rather than City Hall.
Why are we moving to, to the annex?
City Planning is right next door and it's a brand new conference room. I think Erica has seen it. So she probably knows a little bit more about the setup. I think it's way better in terms of, you know, the public's access, public's like visibility of what's going on at the meeting. I think a better sound system, things like that. Cause there's a big echo in City Hall chambers. Erica, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, it's, it's, I toured it a couple of weeks ago. It's a really nice new space. Actually two very large screens. So the public can actually review the materials that the commissioner is in, which is really great for transparency and just being able to really understand what's being proposed. So it is definitely be in a nice way. It will be nice when we go back to doing public meetings, in-person meetings to have that new space.
Maybe in 2021.
Yes, and there is a light rail station two blocks away. So there is transit accessibility there, which is good.
Great.
I'll leave my, I'll leave my comments alone on that one.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna, then we're gonna start and we're gonna proceed with case Z19-055. The address is 665 Summit Avenue.
Okay, I'm promoting Gene O'Connell and Grace Lynch. If there's anyone else who's testifying, if you could raise your hand, I'll promote you to panelist. Here we go.
Okay. Yes. I have to get my video on. Where am I?
And Lindsay Charles Height will also testify for us.
Yep, I switched him over.
Okay, thanks.
Am I on? Yeah.
Yes, we, and we can hear you.
Okay, I'll just start, just to do an introduction.
Mr. O'Connell, let's, let's mark your notices.
Yes, thank you.
David, you're of service. Your, your notice of publication. So Bridget will mark that as A1 for this application.
Okay, so that will be A1 for this application, A1.
And Gene, as always, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
I do. Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
All right, thanks so much. So this application is actually to add one unit to a building at 665 Summit Avenue. On this lot, there are two buildings. One building at 665 has two units. And in the back, there's a small cottage that is a separate unit. So on the lot, there are three units and we're asking to add one more unit into the two-unit building. A little bit of history on this. About a year and a half to two years ago, work was being done on Route 139. And the sewer line into this building was collapsed by the workers. And the building suffered a tremendous amount of damage, received many violations from the city. So the, the owner went in there and pulled all the permits and did all the work. They contacted me and said, at the time we're doing all this work, we think the building lends itself to adding one more unit. So I applied to the Board of Adjustment back in 2019 to add this one unit. In March, we were one of the first victims of the pandemic. We were supposed to be heard in March of 2020. And we got canceled because of setting up the meetings virtually. So I just wanted to put that history on the record. And that'll ask Grace to testify as to does not very much, there's some site plan improvements. And I wanted to go through the, the drawings for the floor area. Thanks.
And Grace? If you could raise your right hand to be sworn and also unmute yourself. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Grace, G-R-A-C-E Lynch, L-Y-N-C-H. I have been a licensed architect since 1990. I have a firm in North Bergen, New Jersey, and I've been doing this since I've been 16. So I, I am familiar with the property. We, we, we have done a little bit of help with the renovations following that sewer disaster. And at this point in time, should I share my screen? Would that be helpful?
We accept qualifications. Thank you. Feel free to share your screen.
Okay. Thanks. Where am I? Who am I?
I mean, those are, those are deep questions.
There we go. I, I'm not hoping for an answer to that. I know that one's good for me. All right. So that is, should be better. And I think I can zoom in as need be. So the, the lot, basically the structure is existing. Both structures on the lot are existing. And I'm just gonna zoom over to the improvements on the lot, which are, hopefully, can I get over there, Dennis? I, I need to get over. But I, okay, so right now, there is a sort of, the McCarthy's loved concrete and did some, some of these different changes to the building over time. This is the facade of the building facing Summit. So some of the work that we show and describe here has to do with fixing some of the concrete here and repairing some of the roof structure. Getting over to the landscaping. Basically, there used to be an old deck here. It was pulled out. There was a tank removed. So essentially, we're repairing what's there, extending a sod lawn, planting firms along the, the north side and landscaping the little islands that are adjacent to this entry for which an easement has been granted and this back area of the lot so that we have a cherry tree. We have a couple of Emerald Arbeville and plenty of knockout roses along the way and some ground cover. But we're, we're trying to create a little bit of a lawn back there for the residents. And, and that's, that's kind of the site work. The building is covered right up to its face on Summit. So that's the only place we could really clean it up a little bit. So that's what we've done.
Thanks, Grace. And now maybe you could just go through the layout for the floors, for the units.
Okay, so let me, I have to just, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I have participated in meetings before, but this is my first presentation. So please bear with me because I'm a little bit slow on the uptake here. Oh, I've got to zoom out. All right. So let me escape that. So I can go to my phone page, right? There we go. Okay, so now I'll, I'll try that full screen thing again. All right, so, so the, the existing house, which faces Summit Avenue, the first floor, we, we isolated the entry to the second floor. So the second floor enters on, from this door and comes up the stairs and is basically a one-bedroom apartment with a living room. And the, the studio that had been previously located in the back remains. The first floor is essentially a little bit odd because there's a middle room that we're calling an office. It can't be used as a bedroom. So we took down doors and we opened this space up so that it communicates this. It could be used as a dining room, could be used as a home office. And, and we took this space at the back of the building, which already had a bathroom and made that a second, like a master bedroom. So the entry to this apartment is through the front on Summit Avenue and, and that's basically it. This, all of the walls, for the most part, are existing. On the second floor, we cut off access through the hallway and we added a closet on the studio side and a closet on the bedroom side. We took down this wall to do that. But it's basically straightforward stuff. Most of that was done under building permits and completed before this application. But just to give you an idea of what's there now. So it's a full-floor unit on the first floor, a one-bedroom and a studio on the second floor. And that little cottage that Jean described in the back is a small one-bedroom. It's a very small pre-existing residential unit.
Great. That's, uh, that, thanks so much, Grace. That's our testimony from our architect. If there's any questions.
If it's okay, we're, can we hold all questions until the end of the presentation?
Absolutely. So it's called Charles Height.
Hello.
Charles, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record, please?
Yes, Charles Height, C-H-A-R-L-E-S, last name H-E-Y-D-T.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Charles been certified as an expert before this board before.
Yes, we accept his qualifications. Thank you.
Yes, I, good evening. I'll, I'll jump right in just for the benefit of the public. I am a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have appeared before this board on numerous applications. Just a quick tidbit, Ms. Lynch is actually a very qualified planner. She prepares reviews for most of the applications up in North Bergen. So I have the pleasure of being on the same project team as her because I know she holds the high standard. So just felt the board would appreciate that. Our role in this application was to really evaluate the potential variances that the project presented. Given the history, one of the first questions we asked was what sort of documentations could we rely on in terms of establishing a pre-existing non-conforming condition other than the physical aspects of the units? And a lot of developments in Jersey City are older. They do predate zoning. They do predate record keeping. So we weren't able to identify any tax documents that supported the, the, the rear unit as well as the, the three units in front. With that, we said it might just be best to present a full case to the board for use variance for the, the proposed four units, three in the front, one in the rear structure. So two residential structures on one lot and just kind of see if we met that test. So in, in that vein, what we did is the typical analysis for supporting a multi-family use in the R1. We reviewed the zoning. We've reviewed the density of the, of the block. And what we found was that, and this is in our principal points, there are approximately nine other multifamilies, multifamily houses on this block. Most of them are three and four families. There is a larger 14 unit that fronts on Bevan, so to the rear of this property. And that, that is a very dense property. So that kind of skews the numbers. But when you run the statistics, the average density for these nine multifamily units is 84 units per acre. If you control for that 14-unit apartment building, it reduces the average to 67 units, approximately 68. What's being proposed tonight is 67 units. So if you include the higher dense multifamily on Bevan or you exclude it, you're still right at the average of the other multifamilies on the, on the block. So given that, I think it meets the test in terms of consistent density for the area. Other particular suitability aspects are, we do have two existing structures. There is an out parcel that is one of the units and an outbuilding, a cottage house, if you will. And then there's the main principal building. So typically, we propose a three-family in one structure. Here, the additional unit comes from that rear structure that more or less fronts on to Route 1 and 9. The other particular suitability aspect that we heard from Ms. Lynch was all the apartments have direct access of their own. So I think that is, is always a benefit in terms of independence and not really restricting any one unit from having access through another unit. I think that was well addressed and corrected actually with that change in the hallway. Other than that, there are other improvements in terms of the integrity of the facade and the roof, the repairs that are being accomplished with, with the, the site plan application and more or less the updating. We heard about the landscaping. I will say that two of the most mature evergreen trees that are ever hidden in Jersey City are located in this backyard. It was a treat to see them. They're tall and they're, they're, they're a really nice, nice sight for sore eyes in Jersey City. With that, I think this site is particularly suitable. It's approximately 2,700 square feet and the density is consistent with the density in the block. In terms of the negative criteria, I think Ms. Lynch would have presented anything that she felt uncomfortable with. We're dealing with existing units. The, the one studio in the cottage house and the second floor studio are, are smaller, but they're efficiency units. There, this is really targeted at people who are in an inner city utilize mass transit. You're right along Route 1 and 9. You have great access to Journal Square. So there's no availability of off-street parking, but from my understanding, most of the people rely on, on public transit to, to get around. In terms of impacts to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, all of the, there's no physical improvements to the property. So we're not expanding any setbacks. There are a number of not pre-existing, non-conforming attributes, but given the uniqueness of the lot, the, the physics, the structure still physically being there, I didn't see that there's any sort of substantial impairment with what's being proposed tonight. That's really my, my testimony. I think this application's relatively straightforward. We just wanted to be thorough given the situation with the application.
Thank you. So that's our testimony, Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, does anyone from the board have any questions? Great. Lindsay, do you want to give an explanation to the public and then see if there's any, anyone from the public that has any comments or questions?
So if anyone has a question or a comment, you could click raise hand on your screen. If you're calling in, you would dial star nine. That's how we would know that you have a question or a comment. We like to keep time. Each member of the public will have three minutes to provide their questions or comments. And I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, Chairman, but if not, I see one hand raised.
Well, Lindsay, Lindsay, excuse me, just for clarification, just for 665 Summit Avenue.
Just for 665 Summit Avenue.
Thank you.
Yep, this is only if you have a question or comment on this specific application. And then I think Commissioner Rothman is going to be the timekeeper. Chad, I don't know if you want to give any specific instructions about your timekeeping, how you'll, you'll keep everyone in check. But you're on mute.
I didn't know I was muted. That's good. I've been talking to myself for 10 minutes. Now, we try to keep it to three minutes. The timing starts when you start speaking, not when you start giving our court stenographer all your information. I give a warning, a shout out at 30 seconds left. If you have a thought, you want to continue, that's fine, but please don't try to start a new thought in the final 30 seconds. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And there's, there's one hand raised and I believe it's, it's the applicant. So going to unmute Mary McCarthy. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please. You are able to unmute yourself now.
Still muted.
Ms. McCarthy, I think you're still muted.
I'm going to promote them to panelist. So they could start their audio and their video if they would like.
I can't unmute her. Can you, Lindsay?
So since they're able to unmute themselves, it sometimes contradicts what action they're trying to do. And then we're just unmuting and muting back and forth. So let's give it a second. Jean, do you know if they're calling in?
I think she was saying she was on, so I'm gonna try to text her.
Okay.
Okay, Lynn?
Yes.
It was Mary McCarthy's bomb and she said she's not going to, she's just raising and she didn't know what, exactly what she should or should not. So it's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Then we're gonna close the public part of this application. Any comments from staff?
Yeah, so just a little, we'll keep it brief. This is a unique scenario. We have a regular through lot in an R1 zone. One of the lot lines, as you saw, butts a state road, one and nine, and the other on Summit Avenue. Plus, there's a range of uses in the area and a range of residential densities in the immediate area, including the block in which it's situated. Despite not having that documentation regarding which of these units are legal and which units are not, the applicant is here tonight requesting one property containing four units. And to be conservative, they're requesting a D1 use variance rather than a D2, which is an expansion of a non-conforming use. And the proofs for a D1 are higher than a D2. Typically, a D2 variance can be justified through site improvements while a D1 has its own set of positive and negative criteria. So just to go into the positive criteria, starting with site suitability, this is an oversized lot, therefore it's more suitable for additional density compared to other R1 lots. And the density is 63 units an acre, which is not quite double the permitted density in R1. It's a little And the density is sixty-three units an acre, which is not quite double the permitted density in R one. It's a little lower. And the implied density is thirty-five units an acre in the R one. And as Mr. Height testified too, this is an area with a mix of uses, including there's some commercial in the immediate area. And as stated previously, there are a number of properties that on this block of higher density. And the average density for the block is fifty-two units an acre, which is just slightly lower than what's proposed here. For the advancement of purpose zoning, this is a density relatively consistent with the surrounding area, therefore promoting the general for general welfare. And in terms of the negative criteria, no expansion of the building is proposed. So there isn't much of an impact on the character of the neighborhood and surrounding properties. In addition, the site improvements are proposed, including the addition of landscaping and repairs to the existing structure. So overall, this proposal is looking to clarify existing conditions through legalizing the units and improve the site overall. So staff recommends approval with the conditions in my staff report, which I thought I had on the data portal in time. So just to be safe, I would like to mark that for the record, and that is dated. Just find it, sorry. My staff report is dated December first, twenty twenty.
Okay, and that will be B one for this application, Lindsay.
Great, thank you. And the conditions of approval in my report are the typical conditions, except for. So there aren't really, I don't think there are street trees shown on the site plan, so if it's determined that street trees are not feasible, as determined by the city's forester. Yep, as per the forestry standards, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of planting street trees to Division of Parks and Forestry. And the receipt of that payment, or if street trees are possible. Either the plan shall be revised, or a proof of that payment shall be submitted to city planning prior to the issuance of a C O. And the architect of record shall be retained during construction and shall submit a signed and sealed letter representing that the site construction and the repairs to the buildings. Are consistent with the work approved before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any commissioners have any questions for staff?
Applicant agrees to these terms.
Applicant agrees to the conditions as enunciated by Lindsay.
Thank you.
Okay, if if no one has any questions, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion on case Z nineteen dash zero five five for approval with the staff conditions.
Hi, it's Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Bokta?
Yes.
Commissioner Netcher?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yeah, so I'd just like to comment about, Mr. Height, I'm glad you got this, be part of that forestry expedition in the back there with those beautiful trees. And we know that Jersey City is trying to keep our greenery going strong. Thank you.
Commissioner Rothman?
I'm all about the green. It's a great, great project. Good luck. Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yeah.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Good luck with the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Good to see you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, proceeding with case Z twenty dash zero two six. The address is one forty-nine dash one fifty-one Broadway.
I'm sorry, Charles, I switched you over. I'm promoting Raul Caboto. And looking for. Robert Weinberg. Here we go. We're doing Broadway, right? I heard. All right, so I switched you over, Robert Weinberg, the attorney, Charles Height, and Raul. Cabato, sorry, I mispronounced your name. There's anyone else that is testifying? Just raise your hand, and I'll switch you over.
The Weinberg is still on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Weinberg, before you.
Let me start my video, I'm sorry.
Before you start, let's mark your notices. You've given us an affidavit and proof of service and notice of publication. And Bridget's going to mark that as A one for this application.
Okay, that's A one for this application.
And Mr. Weinberg, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
You can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, this is this is an application. For a minor subdivision, smart aside plan, so C variance and a D variance. Basically, there are two undersized lots, each twenty by a hundred. And what the applicant proposes to do is to consolidate this into one lot, which would be forty by a hundred. Presently, there's an older two-family house on frame house on one fifty-one Broadway. Which is intended to be demolished. And in its place, we want to put up a. Three-story, three-unit residential dwelling. And that's that's basically what we're looking to do. I'm going to have two witnesses here. One is going to be Raul Cabato, who was the architect, and he'll discuss the plans. The other is Charles Height, who will discuss the C and D variances. And that's where we are at the moment. So I can call my first witness, Raul Cabato.
Great.
Oh, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I can't hear you. Try it again, Raul.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, it's Raul Cabato, R A U L C A V A T O.
Thank you.
So do you want me to qualify Mr. Cabato?
I mean, we accept Mr. Cabato's.
Before the board many times, his license is still valid and outstanding?
Yes, it is.
And, yeah, we we accept Mr. Cabato's.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Share my screen. Okay, so the proposed project shall, the the proposed site consists of two lots that went the. The proposed project site consists of two lots that when combined shall be forty feet in width by a hundred feet in length. The proposed project shall be a. Three-story, three-dwelling unit building with an area of approximately six thousand six hundred thirty, six hundred thirty-one square feet. In a height of thirty-eight feet. There shall be three apartments, one each on the ground, second and third floors. With parking for two cars at the rear yard. So this would be the rear yard. The entire subject premises shall be serviced by a single enclosed stairway and shall be protected by an automatic sprinkler system. Going to, that would be sheet Z one hundred. The proposed premises is located in an R one zoning district on what is currently two lots. Lot thirty-seven to the northwest and lot thirty-eight to the southeast. There exists a three-story, two-family residence on lot thirty-seven, which is right here. The existing structure shall be demolished. The owner has obtained approval from the Historic Commission for the proposed demolition. The adjacent lot thirty-eight currently serves as the driveway for lot thirty-seven. There is an existing drop curb on lot thirty-eight approximately the width of the lot. The zoning chart on this sheet shows that variances are required for the proposed three-family dwelling use. As well as lot coverage. We are proposing to reduce the width of the curb cut to ten feet, which is compliant with the code. Also proposed are areas of landscaping. There's some areas of landscaping here and here. As well as a street tree, which is located positioned approximately the middle of the lot. At the sidewalk. Going to sheet A one zero one. The ground floor shows a two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment. With laundry appliances and shall have an area of approximately one thousand one hundred twenty-three square feet. Also located on the ground floor is the sprinkler pump room, which shall be accessed from the west side yard. Two parking spaces shall be located on the rear yard. Access to the parking shall be via a ten-foot driveway with garage doors on both the front and the rear. There is an area approximately twenty-two feet by twenty-two feet for maneuvering. This entire rear yard, as well as the side yard, shall be shielded by board-on-board fencing, as indicated on sheet Z one one, which is down here. No parking will be allowed in the driveway area to ensure entry and exit for either car at any time. The second floor and third floor units are similar in size and layout. Each unit consists of four bedrooms and three bathrooms, with a balcony at the rear, which is about twelve feet, twelve and a half feet by three and a half feet. In dimension, each apartment shall be approximately one thousand nine hundred thirty-two square feet. As far as the finishes, the primary facade fronting Broadway shall be clad primarily in red brick. The section with oriental windows shall be clad in metal panels. The side and rear yard shall be clad in vinyl siding. The base of the rear yard shall be blocked, and the proposed finishes are stated on sheet. A four zero one. That that pretty much concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And and we will hold all questions until the end of the presentation.
So we'd like to introduce our second witness, who's Charles Height, he's been sworn in already. Continue that, and he's going to testify as to the C and D variances, so I would ask him to proceed if. Possible.
Yes. Mr. Height was qualified, and we accepted his qualifications earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, board members. So with this application, given that the the project involves consolidating two adjacent properties. You do reach an oversized lot. Typically, we don't look to merge properties for a use variance unless there's a substantially larger lot to begin with. However, in this instance, one of the parcels is essentially a vacant property. It's really being used as a. An oversized driveway today. Substantially impervious coverage, and I think that's what got us thinking to really come with a proposed structure. That conforms in terms of the bulk requirements, less less a lot coverage, which I'll speak to. But in terms of the setbacks, the building height, and be able to use the full width of a lot. In in order to achieve two aspects here. One, suitable units, ground floor unit and the floors above. The three units, one on the ground floor, one on the second, one on the third, are all appropriately sized. The creative aspect of this project is is providing the rear yard parking. So given that it's an existing parking lot on on that side of the property with an existing curb cut. We figured maintaining it, providing the two off-street parking spaces on a portion. Of Broadway that you can't park on. So I I don't have a photo log with this application. But if if I can describe to the board, this portion of Broadway also is more or less. Fronting the intersection of 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 Route one and nine when it comes through. So it's it's a highway presence in front of this property. There's no parking permitted. Raul might have a photo. Great, thank you, Raul. So, you know, that that was the thinking to provide some relief, so there's not people parking around the corner on some of the side streets. Which which do have on-street parking. So that's part of the thinking with the application. We are looking at an oversized lot with this proposal. When you factor in the density, the three units on what's roughly six of. Four thousand square feet. The 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 density is about thirty-four units an acre. So the board is where the implicit density in the R one district is thirty-five units an acre. That's the standard two units on a conforming twenty-five hundred square foot lot. What we're proposing is virtually consistent, if not a tick lower than what's what's implicitly permitted in the R one. So I don't think there's any sort of substantial. Increase in density that's being proposed. It's very in keeping. There are other multifamily units. It was described in the Statement of Principal Points. And and also, you can see in this image towards the right, there is the the commercial strip mall at the corner. Of the block. So there is a mix of uses, some higher intensity multifamily uses on the block. So it's it's relatively consistent with those. Those other uses. That's really it for the particular suitability. With respect to the lot coverage. We are, we are in oversized lot, and we're trying to utilize. Most of the property to conform to the bulk requirements, but also provide for appropriate layouts, or balancing those two. So I do think there's benefits in terms of the building coverage. We are proposing the parking in the rear yard. In in other situations, there would likely be. A tandem internal garage. So you have the restriction of having one vehicle parked in in back of the other, which is permitted in the R one. But in this instance, given that the driveway is already a full-length driveway, and more or less functions with the circulation in the rear. We thought keeping that condition. Increasing the, increasing the impervious coverage. Was was a beneficial thing. One of the issues the board could consider is introducing permeable pavers. I I, that's something that the board typically sees when we're increasing impervious coverage. On on properties that that request lot coverage variances, so so that might be a good suggestion and remedy here to address that situation. Other than that, we are proposing landscaping in the front, which isn't there today, so that's an improvement as well with respect to the greenery of the site. That's really the positive criteria. Instead, in terms of the municipal land use law, we are requesting a D one use variance, so I do think that this project does. Redevelop the site with a more efficient. Three-unit development, which is an appropriate density for the R one. So I definitely think it serves that purpose, purpose E. With respect to the negative criteria, we didn't find any substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. This is a very typical proposal for a three-unit in in the R one. Given that it's an oversized property, we do conform to to all other bulk requirements except for the lock coverage. So, you know, this this board has heard me testify before that. It's it's a variety housing. It's consistent with with a lot of the development and higher-density blocks in in. In the city, and especially given that this block particularly has a mix of of multifamily units and commercial units. I think it's appropriate. So there's no impairment there. With respect to the. Detriment to public welfare. This is, this is a relatively consistent development. The units are appropriately sized. We didn't find anything glaring. It's it's a unique parking condition, and I think we're trying to utilize the existing conditions. So that's really all I can say to 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 that end in terms of the impacts of the of the building on on adjacent lots. That's really it in my testimony. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? Okay. Well, we'll we'll see if later if people have more questions. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Just specific to this application, one forty-nine dash one fifty-one Broadway.
See one hand raised, and now it's gone. They changed their mind. Oh, they're back. Okay, Mike Manzo, I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
It seems like he's muted.
Yep, they're able to unmute themselves.
Mr. Manzo, you're unmuted. Mr. Manzo, if you try speaking, I think we'll we'll be able to hear you.
I'll try promoting them to panelist.
I don't see anyone.
They disappeared. I'm not sure if they just have a bad connection right now. Oh. I see them. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure. They're panelists, so they're able to mute and unmute themselves. If you're on a phone, dial star six to unmute Mike. Star six.
I I don't know.
Sorry.
I mean, I don't know, Mr. Manzo, if you have another way of calling in. This doesn't seem to be working this connection.
Just disappeared.
Well, I switched them back over because it wasn't working.
All right, well. We'll give him ten seconds.
Three minutes are up.
Okay, Lindsay, is anyone else from the public?
I don't see any hands raised. If anyone is calling in, you would dial star nine. That's the only way we'd know. You have a question or a comment for Broadway. Okay, I see a call in user. That might be Mike. Okay, so the call, it says call in user one, I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record. If you are trying to speak, we can't hear you. Try dialing star six to unmute yourself. Again, that's star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, man, what a job. Thank you.
All right, could you please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please?
Sure, Michael Manzo, M A N Z O, eighty-two Wright Avenue, Jersey City. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go. You have three minutes.
Bridget, do you need anything?
I can't swear this person in since I can't see them. Ben, maybe you can do something.
All right, how about now? Can you hear me?
Lots of time.
Mr. Manzo, do you swear or affirm that you you are who you say you are?
I do.
For all purposes, let's leave that as it is right now.
Really quick, sorry, Mike, can you please mute your laptop or computer, whatever you're listening to the meeting on? That's probably why it's echoing.
Okay, in the process.
Okay, I think it's better, but okay.
Okay. How about now? We okay now?
Yes, just feel free to start.
All right, let me try this. Let's see how it goes. First of all, we had a get together amongst ourselves in a community. And we're very, very disappointed that this project did not approach us, ask us for our input and see which way we felt one way or another, so that this way we can expand as a community and be helpful to one another. That didn't happen. We're very disappointed in that. Number two, this project, is it going to be owner occupied? Hello?
I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Manzo, do you want to to like outline all of the like points you have and then we'll we'll go back to Mr. Weinberg to address them? I think that's.
Okay, as far as the parking requirements, there's two four bedroom units. And and we're very concerned with that because what we're seeing is there's rentals occurring. And in order to defray the amount of rent, they're renting them out to four different individuals, sort of like a rooming house situation. And although he referred to the parking as being unique, a four bedroom apartment is very, very unique in the area. I'm sorry? Hello?
Keep going, Mr. Manzo.
Okay, it's very difficult to understand what's going on here, okay? It's just the the four bedroom is unique, the parking we feel could have been tweaked a little bit better since it is new construction. We're okay with a lot of the stuff. The only thing, we're very disappointed. It didn't come ask for our input so that we can make this. We know ultimately we're going to have parking problems as we do now. Right across from where this gentleman lives now, we displaced eleven parking spaces because three two families going up there now. A little bit to the south of where this gentleman lives now, we already have another project going on. So we're going to be critical for parking. I think it would be very prudent that he makes a better attempt at parking for the amount of bedrooms that he has in this unit, and then we could go from there. It's been very difficult to convey a lot of other things due to the circumstances of communication here. But this is the best, but more so, we're very disappointed. He didn't come to the community and have our input. So I guess he didn't value us that much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manzo. Mr. Weinberg, do you want to address?
Well, first of all, I I just spoke to to the applicant and he intends to personally occupy one of the units. So it's going to be owner occupied. And as far as parking, I think we comply with 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 what the zoning requires, which I don't think is have to look at the zoning chart.
So a two bedroom, a two four bedrooms only is going to require two parking spaces?
Let me just open the zoning chart.
The requirement of parking is more a function of the size of the lot, I believe. If it's less than fifty feet wide, we're not required to provide parking.
Yes, I see this on the zoning chart. There's no parking required in this area, you know, as far as this this project.
Okay, so less than fifty feet parking is not required at all.
That's correct.
So at this point, Mr. Manzo, I think we should, we should let Mr. Weinberg and his team address the questions that you raised so that we can get.
And just to clarify, the the board probably is aware, but just for the benefit of Mr. Manzo. When parking is proposed, it's it's usually related to the unit count, not not the number of bedrooms. So the city doesn't necessarily adhere to what the state standards is, which is a calculation based off of bedrooms. But they have a more appropriate measurement based off of unit count, and that's citywide. So so typically where a two family is is proposed, two parking spaces. So it's it's typically in the R one, the intent is a one to one ratio.
Okay. Okay, and what what else, Mr. Weinberg?
No, I I don't know that we contacted the the neighborhood people, but they wouldn't, they were noticed, they could make their comments. But this seemed like a rather cut and dry proposition on this. The other alternative would be to possibly put an undersized family house on the on the empty lot, and you'd have worse situation, and we'd be able to build it upright, I believe.
And, okay, Erica, is there a neighborhood association in the area? Was that something that Mr. was communicated to Mr. Weinberg? Was there, you know, a bridge between the office and the community? Did the community have any follow up with the office, anything like that?
No one reached out to me specifically on this application. I do not recall having a discussion with Mr. Weinberg about a neighborhood association in this neighborhood. Granted, this application, I think, was filed maybe at the start of the year, I believe. So right before the pandemic, so I'm not sure if that took place then.
There are an overlying neighborhood association?
I have to refer to one of our maps that we have, but off the top of my head, I cannot name one. This is not an area I typically do reviews in, so I can, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I don't have access to the maps right now on this, unfortunately.
Okay, I mean, I think that would be helpful, and and I don't know the answer definitively. You know, I know that that we try very hard to make sure that these types of things are avoided. The community feels that that their viewpoints are addressed and considered. And I know it's kind of like patchwork in terms of, you know, neighborhood groups forming or or, you know. We're not necessarily sure. It's a relatively fluid situation in some parts of the city. So.
If I can add something, please?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, in a meeting that we had on a property less than a hundred feet from this location, Mr. Singh was in attendance and offered his view on another property. And then another thing I just want to say is that there's more to a community than just people within two hundred feet. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So I I think all of that is valid. I think that that there should be consideration taken into account by the applicant to to meet with relevant groups, not just the immediate neighbors. It seems like that wasn't done here, but I don't know to what extent there was, you know, an attempt to reach those those groups. So does anyone else have any have any questions?
I see another hand raised, Joe Capazoli. I am unmuting you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Joseph Capazoli, C A P O Z Z O L I, and I live at twelve Bryant Avenue, Jersey City.
And Mr. Capazoli, do you verify that you are who you just stated you are and you will consider your testimony as under oath tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify something you guys have been talking about in terms of the neighborhood association. We do have a a community group that meets generally quarterly. And I want to, actually, I want to say on behalf of Sydney that she's very good at notifying me whenever there is a developmental project in the community. And we do, on most cases, set up a community meeting and allow the community to provide input to whatever development is taking place. So in this particular case, I certainly, and I don't believe Sydney that you were involved in this one, that I can see you weren't the planner. So we were not notified at all. I didn't know, know nothing about this. So as Mike said, and I'll I'll reiterate what he said, it's it's disappointing that, especially learning now that the person lives in our community. It's disappointing that they didn't get in contact with one of us to to get some input before we move forward with this. So sad to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capazoli.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then then we're going to close the public portion of this application. Staff, any comments, questions? Or lack of questions?
Okay, so I provided a staff report to Mr. Weinberg dated December first, twenty twenty. I just want to confirm that that staff report has been received.
Yes, yes, I did receive it.
So in that staff report, it outlined some standard conditions. I just would like to just echo what Mr. Hyde stated earlier about the conditions of the site and the suitability for the site. Specifically, as it's just north of it is Row one on, sorry, I always say this wrong, US nine. And so it is sort of a, it's an interesting site. Also, the neighborhood has various uses and the size of the units are comparable to what already exists in the neighborhood. Again, I was not contacted by anyone in the community about this application. And given that the applicant is a neighbor in the community, it's expected that there would be some sort of communication. And typically, you know, it's upon, it's not the responsibility of planning staff to ensure that happens. And it's not necessarily a requirement. But so I just would like to just place emphasis on that. And staff recommends approval of this application.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman? All right, just for the clarification, there are certain conditions that are mentioned in the staff report, or we're going to hear them.
Yes, they are. Would you like me to state them?
For the record, I would appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, so if any motion is made to recommend a, in state, a motion is made to recommend approval. Staff recommends the following conditions to mitigate the negative criteria. One, that the architect of records shall be retained during construction and shall submit a signed letter representing and noting that site construction was consistent with work approved for the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. That all materials and color selection shall be shown on final plans. No change of the facade and site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required for the Office of Construction Code shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. All testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses in accordance with this application shall be binding.
And Mr. Weinberg agrees with those terms?
Yes, yes, I do, and so does the applicant.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions at this time?
I I just want to know if notifying the neighborhood in two hundred feet, is that required by the law or not?
They are required to provide notice. Provide notice, which was put on the record at the beginning of this item. And I'm I'm assuming that is how the resident, the neighbors found out about this item.
Considering. So besides being mailed, everybody within a two hundred foot radius, it's also advertised in the Jersey Journal. So there's two sources of knowledge of 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 a meeting, plus it's posted. I don't know where where are we at this point? If you want me to comment, we've we've, this is a very nice project. It certainly is, as you see from the testimony, it's going to be a benefit to the area. And I'd like the board to consider it and make a motion to allow the application to approve it.
Okay, if anyone, you know, if no one has any questions, if someone wants to make a motion.
Make a motion on approval of Z twenty dash zero twenty-six with the staff conditions.
I'll second that.
You second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bacta?
Yes.
Commissioner Netcher?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, I'd just like to say, um, so they came like the attorney and all, they didn't make the proper notifications and whether it was by a city law or state law, whatever, notifications were sent out to the immediate residents. Marion section, which just entails, takes up a large, large section of the, oh, that area. Um, the two gentlemen that spoke are very uh involved in a whole community of the whole Marion section. We've heard them both speak many times on various uh applications coming through us. Now, we're sorry that, you know, it doesn't get reached out to everybody in the whole Marion section, but um I would just like to make that as a statement, and I vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Rothman?
I'm going to vote yes, but I'm very disappointed in Mr. Cabato. Usually I love his projects, and whenever I know he's presenting, I get my Hardy Plank rally hat on, but I didn't hear any Hardy Plank on this one.
Okay. So Chairman Jacobs?
Uh, I, I do like this project. I, I'm going to vote no, really only because um I, I I think that, that we really should, and I know it's not a requirement. Um, but, but Jersey City, I, I believe, has, has a pretty clear practice in place that we try to make sure that we're inclusive of uh neighborhood associations um and, and the broader neighborhood. So um, I, I think a, as the um people from the community mentioned, you know, a community is more than just the, the immediate neighbors who are within two hundred feet. Um, I think that they deserve an opportunity to at least hear about and weigh in on projects. And I hope that going forward that um we have greater effort to, to reach out as much as possible, even though, and, and I, as I said, I think that this is a completely appropriate um and good use of the, of the space.
Okay.
The Weinberg, uh, yeah, the motion carries six in favor, one opposed. So Mr. Weinberg, that's a, a word to the wise for you.
Yes, thank you.
You should do it for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hardy Plank.
Awesome.
Well, I want to thank the board and staff for all the help.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one question. I know we just voted, but did we also want to incorporate the permeable pavers that Mr. Height mentioned earlier?
Yes.
I think we, I think we can stipulate that, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Great, good luck with the project.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. I think it'll be a benefit to the area, and they'll be very happy once it's, once it's finished. Thank you.
So now we're going to proceed um with case uh unless, Bridget, do you want to take a break, or, or should we proceed with case thirteen?
We can proceed with case thirteen and then take a break.
Okay, uh, we're proceeding with case Z twenty dash uh zero one one. The address is eighty-three Chestnut Avenue.
I am promoting Stephen Joseph and Mukti.
Great, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, uh.
Okay. Joseph, why don't we uh mark your notices? We have your affidavit and proof of service, your notice of publication. Bridget, we'll mark that as A one.
Okay, that will be A one for this application.
And Mr. Joseph, you understand that you'll, you'll allow your witnesses to be sworn in remotely?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Great, um, okay, Stephen Joseph of the Druze Law Firm for the applicant. This is eighty-three Chestnut. The property is a two thousand one hundred sixty-eight square foot irregularly shaped lot. As you'll see, it's located on Chestnut between Vine Street and Elizabeth, Elizabeth Street in the R one zone. The applicant is proposing a new three-story, two-unit dwelling with variances for rear yard setback, building coverage, lot coverage. Uh, Mukti is our architect this evening, and she's going to walk you through the points. So Mukti, let's get you sworn in.
Hello. Hey. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. And state and spell your full name for the record. It's Mukti Bajaj, M U K T I, Bajaj, that's B A J A J. Great, thank you. Okay, um, so my license is.
Sorry, and, and Mukti's been here many times. We accept her qualifications.
Thank you. So just go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so this is um eighty-three Chestnut Avenue. The block is one zero nine zero one, lot is fifty-five. Uh, the, the closest intersection to this property is Wine Street. So it is uh two blocks, uh, two lots from Wine Street uh on Chestnut Avenue. This is an R one zone. This is an undersized lot, um, the regular lot size required is twenty-five hundred. This is two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Uh, we, the project does comply with all the bulk and yard variance. We are just proposing, or the client is just proposing two story, uh, three-story, two-unit building. Uh, so it does have a required side yards of two feet and three feet on um, on each side. The front yard required is seven feet, one inch, which does comply. The only variance we are requesting is a rear, rear yard variance. The required is twenty-nine feet, eleven inches. Um, and we are proposing, sorry, it's twenty-seven feet, eleven inches, and we are proposing twelve feet, seven inches. Uh, also, there's little excess, this room is so there's little excess in the lot building coverage. Uh, sixty percent is permitted. We have, the proposed is sixty-one point five six percent. And the lot coverage is required is eighty-five, and this eighty-eight point seven percent. This is because of the undersized lot. So the page A two, it shows the uh survey or the existing site plan with the demolition of the existing two-story structure and the proposed site plan, which is um, which, which shows a proposed three-story building with the landscaping in the front, which does comply with the, with the ordinance and a proposed tree in the front yard. Uh, the driveway and the, will be having a permeable pavers and the back patio area. So this is a very simple, typical two-family house. It's just the variance for the backyard with a two-car garage in the front, the recreation room at the back for the first floor. Second floor has three bedrooms and two baths. So unit one is three bedroom, two and a half bath. Uh, the square foot area is fifteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And unit two is similar, three bedroom, two, and two bath, and the square foot area is twelve hundred and thirty-eight square feet. There is no rooftop that being proposed, so there will be just having a sloping roof for the entire structure. This is a proposed front facade where, you know, uh, it's been uh, it's been used of uh black and red brick uh with the white trim for the roof line, um, dark gray lintels and the windows with the black frame. These are the side and backyard elevations, basically just heritage gray or the lighter tone gray of vinyl siding for, and the stucco, which also will be a light gray. So the materials are shown on this page eight nine. I think that pretty much concludes my testimony.
Great, thank you, Mukti. Um, I do have another very special expert this evening, Samuel Bellamy from Justin Robin. He has been waiting many, many months to get his planning license. Um, I believe this is his first application ever, so I get to do the honor of that. Sam, let's get you sworn in and qualify you.
Okay, I can't see him because the uh plan is still up.
Oh.
You have to get that off so I can actually see him.
Mukti, if you could uh stop sharing your screen, there we go.
Where is he? Okay. And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
And state and spell your full legal name for the record.
That's Samuel Bellamy, S A M U E L, last name Bellamy, B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Okay, Sam, uh, you are finally licensed, correct?
Correct, yes, as of two weeks ago.
And why don't you, why don't you give us a little bit of your background, where you went to school, where you've been working?
Sure, I have a master's of city and regional planner, uh, planning from Rutgers University. Also, I'm certified with the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been with the firm Justin Robin for the past three and a half years. Um, I've worked on many projects throughout New Jersey and many of the projects that have been before this board.
You're muted, Josh.
All right, I said, thank, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. We accept your qualifications.
Thanks.
Sam, take it away.
Okay, um, so as, as the attorney mentioned, um, we are requesting approval of a two-family home with bulk C variances. Um, the variances are directly related to some of the site constraints um that our architect brought up. Um, the lot size is undersized at two thousand one hundred sixty-eight square feet. Um, and that's really because of the lot depth that extends approximately eighty-five feet along the south lot line and eighty-six feet along the north uh side lot line. Um, and the lot width does taper back from the front to the rear. Um, it's approximately twenty-seven feet in the front and twenty-four feet in the rear. Um, just one clarification on the zoning table, the lot width, um, per the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance requires that the lot width is measured at the um front side, uh, front lot line setback line. Um, so with that, our, our proposed, our existing lot width is approximately seven, uh, twenty-seven feet, which is conforming. The lot area and lot depth are both non-conforming conditions. Getting right into the, the variances, we are requesting a variance for the rear yard setback. Um, we're proposing approximately twelve and a half feet in the front yard. We're proposing a, a approximately seven-foot front yard setback, and this does, this is compliant and does match the Jason Building to the south and also the predominant setback of the block. Um, so the requirement is thirty-five feet combined total, front and rear yard. We're proposing approximately nineteen and a half feet compared to the thirty-five feet required. Um, with our, our approximately seven-foot front yard setback, this would require uh about a twenty-seven-foot rear yard setback. Um, and this difference really, it does, does account for the uh difference in the lot depth, a hundred feet compared to the eighty-four feet. Um, as far as wh- what are um, what are lot depth and building um extension is, we are matching the, the two adjacent buildings, the adjacent building to the south, our, our rear yard setback matches that, and the building to the north actually extends a little bit further past ours. Um, the lot is adjacent to, the rear lot line is adjacent to the side lot line of the property to the west. And there is a building that extends a, a zero-foot setback along that lot line. Um, there aren't any windows along that, that building facade. Um, so we believe what we're proposing will not have any impacts on the light air and open space between the adjacent properties. As far as the building coverage, we're proposing sixty-one and a half um percent, um, where sixty percent is required. Uh, we believe this is a rather de minimis variance. Uh, it's directly related to the, the smaller lot size of the property. As far as the lot coverage, we are proposing eighty-nine percent compared to the um eighty, eighty-five percent permitted. Um, this is an improvement over the existing conditions on the property where approximately ninety-eight percent is um impervious right now. Um, and the project will also be complying with the front yard landscaping. We're, we're, we're proposing a rear yard area, and the front yard, walkways and driveway will be permeable pavers. Also, the rear yard patio a, area will be permeable pavers. Um, and we believe this project prom- promotes the purposes of the um mu- municipal land use law. Um, so it is a permitted two-family home. It's consistent with the residential area, um, and will promote the general, general welfare, welfare consistent with purpose A. Um, as, as stated, the setbacks will provide adequate light air and open space consistent with purpose C. And the um, the building is consistent with the streetscape and the uh additional landscaping will promote a desirable visual environment uh consistent with purpose I, the municipal land use law. Getting into the negative criteria, the granting of the request of variances will not result in a substantial detriment in the general welfare. Um, the, the granting the request of variances also will not result in a substantial detriment to the um zone plan and zoning ordinance. As stated, it is a per- uh permitted two-family home. The bulk is consistent with the R one standards. The, the variances are related to the, this um, the smaller lot size and smaller lot depth. And also, um, we will uh promote the purposes of the R one district by providing compatible infill development. It is a permitted height, um, we're consistent with the streetscape. And um, we also advance the purposes of the um master plan. This is a, we're proposing larger three-family um units. Um, this will provide additional housing for um existing residents and future, future residents of the city. Um, additionally, we are removing some of the the stairway and um other improvements that are currently in the right of way. Um, the stairway from the front will extend to the front lot line, but that is consistent with um the rest of the streetscape where there's buildings that have um a raised entrance, um similar to what we are proposing. Um, with that being said, I, I think that concludes my testimony.
Great, awesome. That uh concludes our application.
Great, are there any questions from uh the board at this time? Any, um, any questions or comments from the public, Lindsay?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, um. Let's close the public portion of this application. Um, any question, any comments from staff?
Uh, just really quickly, I did prepare a staff report dated December first, twenty twenty. It's outline the application background and proposal. And under staff comments, I outlined a criteria to be granted a C one variance. That's what the applicant is requesting tonight, really from three C variances, rear yard setback, building coverage, and lock coverage. So a conforming lot in the R one, as you heard, is twenty-five by one hundred. So the subject property is considered undersized um based on the lot depth and the width. So due to the shallowness and narrowness of the lot, the property meets the criteria to be granted a C one variance. And while the rear yard setback is non-conforming, the front yard and the side yard setbacks are conforming. And as stated in the applicant's principal points, the proposed rear yard setback mirrors setbacks of neighboring yards. Therefore, wouldn't pose a detriment to surrounding properties. And while building coverage is higher than the existing building coverage, existing lot coverage is ninety-eight percent, whereas eighty-eight percent is proposed. Therefore, overall coverage is reduced, plus the addition of permeable pavers helps mitigate the, the higher building coverage. So with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in my report, which are just the standard conditions.
And you've shared those conditions with Mr. Joseph, and they're acceptable to the applicant?
I have reviewed the standard conditions. They're acceptable.
Okay, does anyone have any um questions? Um, if not, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on case Z twenty dash zero one one for approval with staff conditions.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bacta?
Yes.
Commissioner Netcher? Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, and Mr. Bellamy, welcome aboard. Congratulations on your license. I'm sure you'll be, will not be estranged in much longer after coming here before us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Joseph? Um, I, I, before I ask Bridget, um, if we want to take a break, I want to know what your thoughts are on the next application, uh, case Z nineteen dash one zero five.
Uh, my thoughts, I think it's a wonderful application. Um, I'm happy to, to take a break or begin or whatever you, you'd like to do. Um, it, it should be relatively quick. Um, Richard Garber is my architect. He, he is pretty efficient in his presentations. Um, Charles is our planner. Uh, I know we have to watch out for him sometimes, uh, but we, we should be uh relatively quick. So we did meet with the community on that. I'm, I'm not expecting any opposition.
Okay, Bridget, what, what do you want to do?
Let's take a break.
Yes.
Take a break.
Thank you, um, we'll be back. It's eight oh three, so let's try to, to be back by eight oh eight.
Great, thank you.
He lost me at Rich Garber. That's it.
Lindsay, I think we have all commissioners? No?
Looks like we do.
Yes, we do, we have all commissioners.
So Bridget?
Yep.
Mr. Joseph, um, if you guys are ready, we're, we're ready. So we're back on the record, um, when Bridget tells me we're back on the record.
We're back on the record.
And we're proceeding with case, uh, Z nineteen dash one zero five. The address is nine Nevin Street.
Great, uh, thank you, Stephen Joseph of the Toronto Law Firm, the applicant, um, can I confirm my notices that have been received and are accepted?
Yes, Mr. Joseph, we've looked at your notices, your affidavit and proof of service. Your notice of publication, Bridget's going to mark that for us as A1 for this application.
Okay, that will be A1 for this application.
Thank you, and as the last application, Mr. Joseph, you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I, I do have one exhibit for you this evening, um, the, the architect and, and Cameron have been working on revising the floor plans, um, does not affect any of the variances. They were finalized yesterday, I did send these revised floor plans to Bridget, um, so we can enter them into evidence, it's, uh, prepared by Grow Architects dated twelve to twenty twenty.
And we'll mark that A2?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so you're going to be seeing some, some changes to the, to the layouts and, and stuff within the building, doesn't affect any variances. Uh, nine Nevin, Nevin Street, this is located one lot in from the corner of Nevin and Storms, it's in the R1 zone. Um, it's an oversized vacant lot on a dead-end street and one of only four lots within the R1 zone of the area. Uh, the applicant is proposing a new four-story, six-unit building with three parking spaces. In order to accomplish that, uh, we're requesting variances for, for use and height and a collection of both variances. Richard Garber is the architect on this project, Charles Height is our planner, um, Richard is going to walk you through the floor plans. And let's, uh, let's get right into that testimony. Um,
Lindsay, where's Richard Garber?
I see him in the panelist, I just don't physically see him on the screen.
Sorry, he was promoted, my bad.
There we go.
Here he is.
Okay, and I'll wait till he gets on, and just unmute yourself, Rich. Okay, do you, um, raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I can hear you.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And just state and spell your name for the verdict.
Uh, Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you, and if you can keep your voice up because you're really low.
I certainly, I certainly will, Bridget, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
And, Mr. Garber, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much, so I'm going to get right into this and, uh, share my screen, and I'm going to start the PowerPoint. One should be able to see the presentation view now, just want to make sure of that. Good? Yes. Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, this is actually a small project, uh, this is a six-unit, four-story project with parking, uh, uh, in the base. And it is on a, um, a fairly small, uh, street, actually one of the gems we, we have in the city. And, um, we're going to talk about this being, uh, proposed as a, uh, a six-unit, as I said, multifamily, but very specifically, uh, a si- all six units are two bedrooms, and they're, they're small two bedrooms. And I want to bring that up to, to start the conversation because I do know, and I'm very aware through, through my own work and, and other work with both your board and the planning board, that the city is seeing a kind of move to in, increase in size of units because of COVID, right? You're in, uh, a unit for six months at a time and, and you want a little bit more space. Uh, that kind of thinking is precisely behind what you're about to see. Uh, however, uh, counterintuitively, I think maybe for somewhat, uh, we are actually proposing, um, efficiency two bedrooms here. And the reason why I'm calling these efficiency two bedrooms, uh, you'll see, these are five, about five hundred and fifty square foot units. And, uh, in, in this building, and again, it's six units on the, on the upper, uh, floors two, three and four. Uh, I know, I, I, I speak from experience with, with colleagues of mine and friends of mine, you know, in, in terms of this lockdown, um, one could be home, one can be with children, um, one, one could actually, uh, be in a space and need a separate office. And this idea of, uh, two-bedroom units, uh, in, in the city is one that is a challenging price point for a lot of people. And so, so part of the idea here is that we would do very, very well-designed, and I'm going to go through the design very specifically with the board, two-bedroom units that, um, are, are completely legit at five hundred and fifty square feet that are worked out with ADA, with clearances and all that kind of thing, and I think are actually quality units in terms of the light and, uh, and, and use of space. Uh, so when Stephen talked about, uh, he said some, it's really modest changes, uh, the building footprint haven't, hasn't really changed. But what we've done is in speaking, in having a follow-up discussion with, uh, Michael Griffin from Bergen Communities United, as well as working back and forth with Cameron over the last couple of days, we've really been able to tweak the plans, I think, to support this argument even better than the plans that, um, that you, uh, you were originally, uh, submitted to you. Um, as such, uh, because this PowerPoint is new in that it, it references the, um, you know, the, the drawings that were just pre, uh, just recently submitted, we're happy to include this and mark this if you guys would like, by the way. Um, but okay, so, uh, I'm going to start with just the, the San, the Sanborn, the tax map. And, and one of the things I really like about this area, which, which I, I call in my head the sort of Bergen corridor, is it, it really is, um, very unique in terms of the footprints of the blocks. Um, they are odd-shaped parallelograms, triangular, and Ne- Nevin Street exists really in this kind of, um, it's a dead end, it dead ends to a large parking lot, I'll show you some images of this. And our site is one of four sites within the entire area and on the block that is still designated R1. Now, it's a modestly oversized site, that's about two thousand, uh, six hundred and thirty-nine feet, twenty-four by a hundred and ten feet. Uh, you could see that in the survey here, twenty-four by one-ten, as I said. Um, and then you see the, the, the character of the area, uh, there's a lot of new construction, there's a lot of full-coverage type buildings that you see. Um, you see, uh, at, at the corner of, uh, Bergen and Montgomery here. Uh, and then you see Nevin Street here, and this is our block. Now, I will say that the, the whole other side of Nevin's is in a redevelopment area. So this is all permitted multifamily here, and as a matter of fact, I have a, a, Stephen and I both, and Charles, actually, this, this team has a, has a, a project before the planning board this coming Tuesday, uh, which is a, a, a three-lot project, uh, right across the street. Uh, there are existing multifamily conditions like the one I'm circling here. So it, it really, uh, is a block that, e- even though it's a quiet and small block, it, it does really support, I think, the use that we are, uh, requesting here. Now, in terms of the zoning map, you see here, our, our, uh, this is the, the thousand-foot diagram also included in our set. There really is a, um, a variety of different zones that we're in here. Uh, eighty-five is McGinley Square, the redevelopment plan, um, the NC zone is here, we have R3. Uh, further, slightly further south on, uh, Monticello, we have Jackson Hill. We have a lot of R1 that is kind of separated from our site. But then right on Nevin Street, we actually have a, a small amount of R1, and there are four existing sites, ours being the largest and the longest of all of them, uh, for which we're asking for, um, uh, again, a use variance for multifamily here. Now, this is a, um, a very recent, uh, a screen grab, uh, that I took right off of Google Maps or Google Earth of the area. Again, um, much of what you see across the street here is actually slated for development. And you do see that there's a lot of taller buildings in the area, mixed with some smaller R1. So it's a very, very diverse type of, uh, type of, type, uh, portion of the city. And that diversity actually speaks also to, uh, the typology, the units that we're going to talk about. This is a, um, a photo of, uh, the, um, of, of the site itself, and you see it's a kind of railroad-looking site. Uh, this is one of Charles's, uh, slides, uh, so Charles, this, this will also be, appear later in, in, uh, in this slideshow as well. Uh, so nine Nevin Street, and, uh, you see it's a, it's a kind of long site, it looks like a railroad site because of the fact that we have a, um, a, a multifamily fairly close to our lot line to your left, as well as a, um, uh, I, what I believe is also a multifamily house, even though it's zoned R1 to our right, which is also adjacent to our lot line. Uh, we'll also speak about the coverage of these kinds of buildings also in, in establishing some points for relief. Now, this is our proposed site plan, and what you are seeing is a building that, that does, um, have, uh, have, have, uh, more coverage than what is permitted in the R1. Again, it's a larger site, and I'm going to get into some of these metrics, uh, in it, in a second. Now, in terms of the zoning tabulation, um, we are asking for a use variance, and the use kind of subsumes some of the other things I'm about to talk about, I'm aware of that. Uh, but I did want to say that we do have a rear yard setback that is not compliant on the ground floor only. So on the, on the upper floors two, three and four, we actually do comply with a thirty-foot rear yard. Uh, and I'll show that in the plans, on, on the ground floor, it varies between eleven feet, five inches and twelve feet. And that difference of seven inches is just because of a non-parallel rear lot line. Um, and then we are, uh, because we are proposing here a four-story building, we're proposing it at forty-three feet, two inches. So this does deviate from the maximum height in the R1, which is three stories. But you'll find that it is actually quite consistent with the character of the block and the things around us. Uh, so before I get to the plans, to, to get the proposed design key points on record, um, the building proposed is four stories and forty-three feet, two inches, as I just said. We are proposing six residential units, and again, these are all small-ish two-bedroom units, an important aspect of this project. They're well-designed, uh, smaller units that I think bring an important typology and an affordable price point to the area. And again, I'm talking very specifically about, um, say, a single parent that is, that is home with a child and needs separation, needs two distinct spaces, two bedrooms, so that, um, they can do their work and the child can, can do their schoolwork and so on. Um, there's other uses, I, other ways that I think these, these, these units can be used as well. Um, elevator is proposed, providing wheelchair accessibility to all residences, of course. Um, the first floor is composed of parking, some green space I'll talk about, and a corridor to the elevator lobby. Uh, we are proposing about five hundred and thirty square feet of common roof deck space, and then there's ample green roofs, there's three hundred and seventy-ish. We are proposing about 530 square feet of common roof deck space, and then there's ample green roofs. There's 370-ish square-footed foot areas where we have modular green roofs proposed as well that are gonna mitigate stormwater runoff and things like that. And I talked about that rear yard setback. We do comply with the 30 feet on floors two, three, and four. But we are asking for relief on the ground floor, and I'll show you how that is configured. The units will all be Energy Star compliant. We take that kind of thing seriously in terms of in terms of energy efficiency. Now, in terms of the ground floor, we'll start with the setback in the rear. We talked about so the lot line of the 30 feet is somewhere over here, if you can see my mouse. So we are requesting support here for a setback that varies between 12 feet on this side and 11 feet, 5 inches on this side. And that's seven inches where difference we're talking about is because of this diagonal that that is not parallel in the rear yard. I am happy to report, actually, that we will be populating this rear yard with native species pollinators. These are, these are one of the things that I talked about a bit with Cameron, and those are gonna include rhododendrons and black-eyed Susans. I've got some photos of those just to show everyone what that looks like. But but equally importantly, the other thing that we've done here, which is a little bit different than what what you've seen, someone just drew a line here, is that we are reconfiguring this building to have a scissor-type stair. And I think the board probably knows this, but in the in the latest adoption of the NJIBC, scissor-type stairs have been reintroduced. They were gone for a while. They left in about 212 or 2013. And now they're back. And and what what this means is basically there's a kind of helix where the stairs can actually be fire-separated but in the same core. And what that does is it allows us allows us per code to save some space, which I think really speaks to the sorts of efficiencies that we are that we are looking for here. Now, the total gross square footage of this floor is about 1,748, 50 square feet, 50 square feet, 1,748 square feet, excuse me. We have a handicap parking space dedicated in the rear with some bike storage, mechanical space with a trash and recycling room. The scissor stair I told you about that has access to the side yard here as well as a lobby, a vestibule lobby, where you walk in and go right to the elevator. The elevator will be an accessible means of egress here. Now, one difference in terms of the zoning tabulation is we initially brought this building to Cameron with a three-foot setback on this side and a two-foot setback on this side. We're maintaining the two feet on this side. We are actually increasing the setback on this side, so we're compliant to 3 feet, 8 inches. And the reason why is when we added the scissor stair, this egress access path by code needs to be 3 feet, 8 inches. So that's that's basically what we're proposing here. So the overall organization of this ground floor and the units above, for that matter, have stayed more or less the same. There's just been some subtle tweaks that, again, I think enhance enhance the design of the building here. Briefly, just to talk about those those native pollinators, we have black-eyed Susans, and we have some rhododendrons that will be planted specifically in the rear yard. Now, as we move up the building, this is where the the units start. The first thing that I will I will speak to is, so here's the that rear yard I was just talking about. We are proposing both a private deck space as well as the first modular green roof on top of the the extent of parking. So our 30-foot setback is clearly shown here. Then we have on on top of the roof of the parking, where we setback the full 30 feet. We have a private deck for this unit as well as a modular green roof. You see here our scissor stair as well as our elevator. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about how these units, these units layout. So the units are efficiency. I admit, actually excitedly, that they're they're small, but they work out quite well in that we have a two-bedroom pair of bedrooms on both the front here and back of the building. One of those bedrooms is more primary, is larger, a little bit wider, as you can see. The bedroom, the smallest bedroom is has has an approximate width of seven feet. So admittedly, it's small, but but doable by a depth of about 12 feet and change. And then the other bedroom is larger. Both of them have the requisite closets. And then what we have here is we have a living area that takes advantage of a series of clear-story windows. And I'm gonna show you a section of that because it's very important that the board understands how we're modulating the form of the building. It's not just a straight wall. Our requisite ADA bathroom, modest living area with windows, space for furniture, space for a flat panel, all that sort of good stuff. And then we have a galley-type kitchen on the other side of the building entries. And those galley-type kitchens do work. They also have a series of clear-story lighting. And they they also meet all of the requirements in terms of accessible work surface, in terms of accessible sink, in terms of a full-size stove with burners and a full-size refrigerator. So these are not micro or anything like that. These are units that are just more efficiently planned to get to bring, again, a smaller two-bedroom unit with a lower price point to an area that I think is inundated actually with one-bedrooms and studios. And I can I can, you know, stand here as as guilty of of being responsible for for several of these buildings on that Bergen corridor where the majority of products being introduced are ones and studios. So I think that this, it's a small building, only six units. But it's very specifically thought of as a typology that contrasts that sort of thrust and allows for what is a more affordable unit with a kind of fully worked-out two-bedroom organization. So you see that here. Now, I talked about these these clear-story windows that I'm pointing to. We have four rows of them. This is a section of what that looks like for everyone. This is, this happens to be over a kitchen. Now, what happens in a kitchen, right? You have your counter, you have a cabinet, and then what happens above your cabinet? You put your bowls that you don't use there or something like that, or it's a plant shelf or something like that. We're using it for legal light and air. It's one of the nice things about, you know, being able to utilize more fully the form of this very narrow building where we actually have a series of eight-foot strip windows that bring legal light and air into a living and kitchen area. So when I go to the, so so everyone sees this. So when I go to the 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 third and fourth floor plan, which stack, it's the same as the second floor, just no, you know, no rear deck in the back. Because there's no parking, you know, there's no parking roof here. We're showing that those kinds of slot windows that exist above the, you know, in the wall here, in the wall above the kitchen, in the wall above this kitchen, in the wall above this kitchen, with our with our more standard windows existing in the bedrooms, bringing in light and air. There will also be on bedroom two, in both units, a clear-story panel to to allow for more natural light to be moving through the units. So so we're very excited about this as a typology. We think it's a little bit different, but we have spent a lot of time actually in the last year, but very specifically with Cameron and others in the last couple of days, really trying to refine this product. And we are excited about it. Now, in terms of the roof, we are utilizing a roof deck. That roof deck is barbell between another two areas of modular green roof. And just to remind the board what this is, these are two-foot by two-foot sort of bat bowls, if you will, that have plant material in them. And the plant material sits raised. It's a raised bed above the bottom of the modular unit. So rainwater collects in the modular unit and feeds that plant material while also slowing and just evaporating, right? So what it does is it mitigates stormwater runoff a little bit more. Something we wanna do. We're not really over so much in terms of coverage here. But at the same time, I think it's an important aspect that 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 helps. There's not gonna be much in terms of mechanical equipment. It's a small building, but we do have a dedicated space behind the circulation core for mechanical equipment. And then we have a common roof deck that is about 534 square feet that will be accessed via a dedicated lobby. That lobby serves one of the stairs and the elevator. And then we have another door here. That's just an egress door. You don't really come out that door. That's really for for egress separation. Now, in terms of the the facade of the building, we're also excited about it. We we like doing contemporary designs. And what we're trying to do here is really speak to the narrowness of the site and 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 the the appropriateness of putting four stories here with all the other taller buildings around us. So you see here a kind of series of metal panel and hardy panel, which will be utilized on the building. You see our garage and our doorway doorway here, our entry door here. So this is a fairly thin and tall building. Again, it's four stories, going up to 43 feet, 2 inches to top of roof. And then we have a kind of stair cores and elevator penthouse at the at the at the upper roof. The rear elevation is is similar. This is also kind of hardy panel on the rear, and then we are, we shift to a stucco on the sides of the building, which you see here. And this next elevation, which is the east elevation, these actually show those strip windows I talked about. So those strip windows, which are those eight-foot windows that are providing legal light and air into the into the the kitchens and living rooms. This is basically what they look like. And you see this, it almost looks flat. But I wanna remind the board of the section, which again is completely to code, where we actually cut that end. So we're holding the two-foot setback here, but we're setting our window in a whole other, I think about a foot and a half, and we're angling the roof here to actually allow for the light to bounce off. This'll be a bit of a reflective material, like an aluminum panel or something that will allow the light to bounce off and into this unit. And so that's that's what this basically looks like on the side yard. Now, those windows didn't actually get it into our exonometric. But but the exonometric hasn't really changed otherwise. This is the building we're proposing, and it's small. It's a little bit different, but again, I hope the board does does feel and agree that it is an important typology to be bringing into an area. Smaller two-bedroom units with a better price point, making making this Bergen corridor more affordable. So that's my presentation. I have Charles from Dresner's slides to follow.
Richard, just I I might have missed this, so it might be my fault, but the bicycle parking spaces, how many bicycle parking spaces do we have?
There's one per unit, so we have six.
Six bicycle parking spaces, okay. I I know normally we hold questions to the end. There was a lot of technical detail here. So if anybody wants to ask a question, I'll freshen everyone's minds. Otherwise, we can move on to Charles. Yeah, okay. Charles, we can get you sworn in and take it away?
Yes, hello.
And I remind you, you're still, you remain under oath, Charles.
Yes, thank you, Richard. Hi, good evening, board members. I guess I'll start off with, I concur. See, immediately Steve and Vinnie got very nervous there. But no, we we do do a lot of legwork behind the scenes, so we do cover a lot of ground and try and cover what we review and analyze with respect to these applications. And I do appreciate the board giving me every second of time to testify, cuz I I'm partial to this board. And and over the years, you know, you've you've shepherded the way for development in the city, so all credit to you. But let let me just dig in here, and I will try and be brief, but I do wanna touch on a few things that we looked at. I I think Rich covered the contextual aspects of this property very well. So we do need to use variance in terms of particular suitability. We are on a very unique block. It's a vacant property, and we're adjacent to other zones that have higher intents and also permit multifamily. Immediately adjacent to this property, which you can see on this exhibit, lot five on this block is is a four-story multifamily development. So I won't really address too much more. I think Rich covered the zoning and the particular aspects about this property. What we did look at is how the the two more critical bulk requirement, bulk variances that are being requested tonight compare. So what this analysis is, is in a aerial map overlaid with two items. Building coverage, the building envelopes, you see in orange, as well as the setback measurements, which are in red dimensional lines. So we did this for every property. And what we found was that the average building coverage for this block is approximately 77%. And and what I think is is important to note is what's being proposed, given that we are not occupying the full lot with the ground floor. We have a substantial setback on that ground floor that we're only at 69%. So that's less than the average of all these other parcels. Most of the parcels along Bergen Avenue and Montgomery, so I'm referring to lots seven through 13, are full lot coverage, lot 14 as well. So they do drive up that that building coverage. And we are a vacant lot, so that that average would probably be increased with the improvement of of this project. The other aspect of this exhibit is we we tried to look at the rear yard setbacks. So one interesting thing to note is block five does sit at the corner of Storms and Nevins. Based on the configuration of that lot, the the width is along storms, creating the rear yard, sharing the 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 rear property line, sharing our lot for the subject properties' side yard. So it's a unique condition where you have a rear yard abutting, a side yard. That setback's only seven feet. In terms of the other setbacks, you can see from from the dimensions, many of these lots are irregular. This property does actually have one of the deeper lot lot depths. And that's, I think, another aspect to the particular suitability is why we're able to achieve a higher-than-average rear yard setback to to provide for the the ground floor layout with the parking as well as the upper floors in complying with that 30-foot rear yard setback. We we did work intensely at respecting the rear yard space. This has, this property does have a very good, what we refer to as the donut hole. Much of the donut hole exists on our property, and I think we're trying to to respect that and maintain that with the the ground floor setback. And and also the the setback on the floors above, the greater setback on the floors above. So I I just wanted to de- detail that for the board because cuz we did look closely at it. We didn't want to to overstep what we thought was respecting the intent of the R1 district as well as just general good development practices. We are also requesting a D6 height variance, given that the proposed structure is four stories, 43 feet, what's permitted. If you're doing similar floor-to-ceiling stories, is is three stories, 33 feet, so we are 10 feet. And and one story above what's permitted in the R1. Again, I do rely on the fact that much of the other development on this block are in more intense zones and across the street. In the NC district, you're permitted five stories. This property at the corner is the the multifamily that I I referenced. It's a very large, older older multifamily building. The the density, I can I can dig it up, but it's a substantially dense property. I believe it's, I'm looking at my notes now. It's it's 155 units per acre, so it's it's a substantially dense development. This is right next door. So I think in context, when you consider our this property abutting the vacant lot today, our our project serving as an infill residential development. It's a multifamily use but still consistent with the R1 residential use pattern. It serves as a transition to to step down to some of the adjacent homes further, further east on Nevin Street. So I do think it's compatible and consistent in terms of building height. We also are respecting that inner donut, as I mentioned. So in terms of some of the impacts, just on this one particular issue, the other properties to the north, as I mentioned earlier, are all predominantly improved with buildings. And and therefore, there's really no, well, based on the the review of the aerial, there's no outdoor patio spaces or rear yards for the most part that are being negatively impacted by the 12 taller heights. As I mentioned, we also are respecting the 30-foot rear yard setback for the floors above. So just to to reiterate that on on the impact of the additional story for what's for the proposed project. There are the, the two other bulk variances that I don't think just, just actually two other bulk, bulk variances, one for the rear front yard setback. We are proposing a zero front yard setback. I, I think that, given that there really isn't a predominant development pattern in the neighborhood, let alone on Nevin Street, across the street, zero front yard setbacks are permitted. And we're really kind of matching that level of development for the block. The corner property has a, I think it's maybe a one or two-foot setback along the front, so, so not substantial. The other C variance that I did want to point out was the elevator bulkhead height. In the R-one, what's permitted based on this proposed story height is a maximum elevator bulkhead height of, of ten feet or a maximum rooftop apartment size of ten feet. What, what we reviewed on the plans was approximately fourteen feet. Let me just detail that in my notes here to get the board an exact measurement. Fourteen feet, three inches, so that exceeds the ten feet. The elevator is set back the appropriate distance in terms of the one-for-one. It's just the overall height, so it's screened. As was testified, it's the, that rooftop appearance level is going to be, the materials are going to be consistent with, with the proposed facade of the building, so it won't really stick out nor, nor less be seen.
If I may add to that, I'm sorry to interrupt. The, so we, we haven't specified an elevator for this building yet. So it may very well be that we can find one that is within the height. I'd rather, you know, I think it's safe, because we haven't specified yet to have this listed. But, but we're, we're very cognizant of what that height requirement is. And if we can find an elevator, a suitable elevator that, that has a lower penthouse, we'll certainly do it.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Garber, that's a very good point. Because I, I think we did discuss the, the conservative nature of the quest. Elevators, depending on the model, the make, manufacturer, they're all different, run differently and operate differently. So and, and obviously there's a cost involved. So I think just generally, a fourteen-foot-high elevator bulkhead is consistent. I don't think that's abnormal for any elevator, so it's not something
Right.
outside of the realm. But that's really it for the, the bulk variances. And the elevator does provide access, ADA access to their common roof deck. So it does have its direct benefits for, for, for that activity space on the roof. I, I think I can move along. I'm benefiting from a really good presentation for Mr. Garber. Don't want to put my foot in my mouth, so I'll move into the negative criteria. We, as, as Mr. Garber mentioned, we did work on this application with city planning, going back and forth to really improve what's, what's being proposed before the board tonight. I, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment of the general, of the general welfare. I, I say that not so much in terms of the bulk impacts, because I think we covered them very well. And I think the, the, the footprint and the, the building form and mass is appropriate, more so for the, the unit layouts. And Mr. Garber's one of the leading architects in the city with creative designs. I think Mr. Joseph and myself has, has really asked, asked him to show us and prove to us how these units function, what's the thinking behind them. And I think, you know, you heard it directly from him tonight. So I, I, I do support that, that the units are, are given that they're smaller, are appropriate for, for the future tenants that, that will enjoy more efficient two-bedroom space. I'll leave it to the board to, to provide some comments, but I, I just know that we did work as a project team to try and enhance the units. The scissors staircase was one of the latest additions, along with all the other modifications, the green roofs, the, the rear yard plantings that are being proposed with this project. With respect to the impairment of zone plan or zoning ordinance, I'm, I'm was very impressed by the prior planner who detailed the R-one standards and the MLUL purposes. The R-one does have the intent to encourage compatible infill residential development at appropriate scales and preserve the residential context of, of, of the R-one district. This project, in my professional opinion, meets that test. I think it's a, a very great transitional step down from the adjacent residential building. It's on a very unique block located with the NC District. Bergen Avenue is a commercial corridor. So I think it's an appropriate establishment of, of the six units on this size lot. The city planning reference in memo in red, ninety-nine units per acre. The board knows the implicit density is thirty-five, so we're, we're substantially greater than that. But not to rehash all of my testimony, I think it's, it's balanced when you consider the, the aspects of, of the massing and, and the layouts. Parking is three spaces for the six units, so you're at point five. There's, there are bus routes that run along Bergen, but I think my testimony tonight will really rely on the fact that this is a vibrant neighborhood with, with many different commercial uses along Montgomery, Bergen, and, and even along, some along Nevins. With that, I, I really want to conclude my testimony. I, I'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Yeah, I mean, the, the only other thing I, I'd like to add is just a, you know, a, a personal note. You can, you can see behind me. I'm in my closet underneath a stairwell. I'm in an apartment that's less than six hundred square feet. My girlfriend's a therapist, I'm an attorney. Confidentiality is an issue now more than ever. An apartment laid out better, like what Richard proposed, would, would be better in the situation that we're in now. Personal note on the, on the smaller unit sizes than you're used to seeing. With that, that concludes our, our testimony. I'm sure there's questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board at this time? Any questions or comments from the public? Lindsay, is there anyone?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Lindsay, were you gonna say you do see someone?
Nope, sorry.
Then let's close, we're gonna close the public portion of this application. I, I would say, yeah, I, I think, think at the very, at the outset of this, I was very reluctant to think positively about such small two-bedroom units. I, I do think, so, so Mr. Garber, thank you very much for your, your presentation. I, I do think that, that it looks like something that, that makes sense, does offer good housing mix for this particular part of the city and, and certainly being so close to, you know, major redevelopment area. I certainly, I think supports, you know, the density of two-bedroom instead of a one-bedroom. But staff, I didn't know if you had any comments?
Uh, yes, planning staff has a few comments, so. Firstly, I just wanted to add as well, the street trees on this site, specifically, they would be required, one street tree as per the city's forestry standards. However, there is a old-growth London Plain that is to the northeast of their property. And it's imperative that we preserve our older-growth canopy in the city, of which will provide shade and cooling effects, reducing heating and obviously the air quality benefits. But what the applicant's doing as well, which wasn't mentioned, is they're going to pay for two additional street trees and the city forester is going to examine the block further and figure out a optimal locations for those two trees. As far as the positive and negative criteria go, airlight and space negative aspects of it, not conforming with the R-one standards. They are meeting the side yards, the height to staff doesn't seem to really cause any sort of significant detriment to the area with the shadow that would be cast. It would actually go behind them and would already be hitting a taller building, so. The community really wanted the parking, oh, and the applicant met with the community. So they've, they've really done their due diligence here with crafting a project that is going to meet the vision for the community and is going to implement some of the more green components that we like to see in our projects. The city staff support. But I think, yeah, the testimony tonight really covered all bases and as long as the applicant is willing to agree to the conditions in the Jersey City Planning Staff Report that was provided on the data portal dated November tenth, twenty-twenty. Planning, planning staff men's approval with those conditions.
The applicant accepts all conditions.
Great. Any questions for staff? Any comments? If, if not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion on Z nineteen dash one zero five with approval with staff conditions.
Okay.
Need a second.
A second.
Commissioner should be seconded.
Okay.
Okay, all right, here we go. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Netcher.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Rothman.
First, I want to thank Cameron Chester Black for bringing us a little Freddie Mercury vibe here. And secondly, Mr. Garber certainly has brought us many, many interesting projects. And like Chair Jacobs said, you take a look at him at first glance and you say, this is crazy, but by the time he walks you and smooches you over and makes love to you and gives you a vocab, I learned two new words tonight from him, which is very exciting. So I'm, and I know this neighborhood is changing rapidly. And I'm for all diversity and experimentation that we can get away with. And I, I think Chair Jacobs can speak well for an issue he brings up more than once, which is sometimes it's crazy to have an R-one zone and four, four, four lots in the middle of a, a jumble of other things, it's kind of, someone should have looked at this, I guess. But I think this is great, I hope it works and I'm all for it, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bachtah?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner McCormick?
All right, thank you for not forgetting me, yes.
I'm learning. Commissioner Shadid?
Yes, I would like to call Commissioner Jacob and Commissioner Rothman. I enjoyed their presentation very well and good luck. Thank you, my votes yes.
Okay, and Chairman Jacobs?
Yes. And, and good luck with the project. I, I would echo, you know, as I've mentioned on multiple projects and, and Chet certainly brought up, but you know, the city probably could stand to have fewer R-one zones than they do. And, and while I, I like this presentation, maybe we don't need to see as many presentations in areas that are obviously miszoned.
Motion carries, all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
Okay, so I think that's it.
Now we have some resolutions.
Resolutions. Yeah.
Shall we do that?
Let's move it, Ren.
Okay, so the first resolution to memorialize, this was heard on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. It's case Z twenty dash zero five zero. The applicant was Charles Lombardi, present on August twenty-seventh, where Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Rothman, Netcher, Jamie and Shadid. That passed five in favor, two opposed. The two opposed were Commissioner Rothman and Commissioner Jamie. But that was for a two-year extension. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next resolution to memorialize occurred on October eighth. Present on October eighth were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Rothman, Deed, Brown and Netcher. That was cases D twenty dash zero three nine. That was for thirty-two Sherman Place, demolition of a structure and an A appeal of a significant integrity determination from the Historic Preservation Commission. There was a, a motion to deny that appeal, which was to prevent the demolition of that building. And that passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
And Lindsay, I'm going to make one correction to this resolution and my secretary will give you that tomorrow.
Sounds good.
One thing that Mr. O'Connell wanted to change. Okay, so the next, the next two resolutions to memorialize heard on October twenty-second. Present on October twenty-second was Commissioners, Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, McCormick, Shadid, Roth, Mitchell and Bachtah. And Commissioner Bachtah was not present for this entire application. And the case was Z nineteen dash zero five one. The applicant, Joseph Lenz. The address is two eight five point five Third Street. It was for a D and D variances. And that passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
The next case also occurred on October twenty-second. This time Commissioner Bachtah was there for the entire presentation. There were seven Commissioners present. That was cases D nineteen dash one zero seven. Jing Nash Chef, a preliminary and final major site plan with a D variance of thirty-seven Storms Avenue. That passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
And the next three, next five resolutions, yeah. That was because that, that occurred on November fourth. And present on November fourth were Acting Chairman McCormick and Commissioners Shadid, Bachtah, Brown, Mitchell and Rothman. The first resolution to memorialize was D twenty dash zero eight three. John and Mary LLC. The address was three seventy-three dash three seventy-five Danforth Avenue. And that was, that passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
And the next one, same six Commissioners present on November fourth was D twenty dash zero seven four. New Hope Urban Renewal LP. Preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variances. Forty-three dash forty-nine Fairview Avenue and two oh nine Monticello Avenue. That also passed, six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next matter also on November fourth, same six Commissioners. Z twenty dash zero seven three. New Hope Urban Renewal LP. Preliminary and final major subdivision approval with C variances, same address forty-three dash forty-nine Fairview and two oh nine Monte, Monticello. That also passed, six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next two, I guess we can do as one and, and Lindsay, I have to just And Lindsay, I have to just have Zelka do the language of this over. These two, these were, this is for the approval of the appointment of me as the legal counsel and Bridget as the reporting services. We had that discussion and passed that on November fourth. And today, we're going to memorialize the two resolutions appointing me and Bridget. So all in favor of memorializing that?
I gotta think about that one.
You moved it. And the last, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, the last two occurred on November twelfth. Present on November twelfth was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, Netcher, and Brown. The first is D twenty dash zero six nine. JC Urban Development LLC. Final major site plan administrative amendment approval for three sixty-nine dash three seventy-one Second Street. That passed, six in favor and one abstention, which was Commissioner Netcher. So all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, also on November twelfth. Same seven Commissioners. Z twenty dash zero zero two. Seventy-six Hutton, JC LLC. Minor site plan approval with E variances for one thirty-four New York Avenue. That passed, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
That concludes the resolutions.
Make a motion to close?
No, must to go home. Because we are home.
Yes, right. We are home.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Okay, good night.
See you on the sixteenth.
Wednesday.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.